Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of November 4th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and it's also streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank SMC Director Mark Sarah, as well as IT Director Brian LaRue, who help us with each of our meetings. Next is public participation. No one has asked to speak with us this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so in the future, please contact the school committee at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us, and we'd be happy to have you join us by telephone. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anyone have anything this evening? Lindsay?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, as a parent, and many of the parents in our district, this week was Conference Week, in addition to Voting Day yesterday, and I want to thank all of the teachers for their creativity in figuring out how to include parents in really unique ways, but really very often going above and beyond. And schedules are always ridiculous, but for some of our teachers, back-to-back conferences, particularly at the elementary level, but for all of us now knowing how difficult it is to be on a Zoom call, some of them were doing 25 Zoom calls back-to-back-to-back. So I just want to thank all of them and thank all of our parents for continuing to, you know, bob and swerve with us as we discover new ways to do all of these different things. So thank you to all of our educators.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else?
I would just like to mention to the committee, as well as the community, that the school committee did receive a petition recently. The petitioner is an SHS junior. Her name is Louisa Scott, and the petition is about changing the Shrewsbury Colonial mascot's name. And the petition raises concerns about the negative connotations that may imply to some in the community. I think it was October 28th, Mr. Wensky, myself, Dr. Sawyer, along with Todd Bazilo, three of the Assistant Principals at the high school, as well as Athletic Director Jay Costa, met with Louisa, as well as several other students, to talk about the petition. We wanted to hear directly from them, what their thoughts were, where they thought this should go, what tasks that they were looking for the school committee to take. And after discussing it further with Dr. Sawyer, I've tasked Dr. Sawyer with creating a mascot ad hoc study group, and they will be charged with reviewing the petition, studying the history of the mascot's use for SHS, and how the term colonial has been defined historically, soliciting public feedback regarding how the colonial mascot is perceived in the present day. We would consider doing surveys with the public, public forums, those types of things, to get feedback from everyone, so everyone's voices are heard. We would want to have them discuss the pros and cons arguments for whether to change the mascot in analyzing how these align with the district's core values, the potential impact on school culture and climate, consideration on logistics and the financial impact, and any other anticipated outcomes. That group would then come to the school committee and make a recommendation regarding whether to take action and stop using the colonial as the SHS mascot. We've come up with the following suggested groups to be part of this ad hoc committee. We're thinking about three SHS student representatives, three Shrewsbury High School faculty members, including at least one social sciences teacher, three SHS parents, three SHS alumni, and three SHS administrators. It would be Mr. Bazilo, one of the Assistant Principals, as well as Jay Costa. So at this point, we're thinking about forming the group by the end of November, having them start meeting in December, and then we would recommend that the group present their recommendation to the school committee by March 21 at the latest. And this, I think, gives this group some time to form, as well as the appropriate time to really look at this and make a recommendation to us that's fully formed with input from everyone. Any questions, concerns? Nothing. Dr. Sawyer, any comments on this?
I appreciate that approach, and I look forward to working with Mr. Bazilo to get that group up and running and to really study the issue and look at it from the various perspectives, important to listen to the different perspectives on it, and do some research around the history of it and all those element pieces, so that ultimately the school committee can make the most informed decision it can.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. First off, I was also on my list to thank our staff and our families for, I think, what was a successful Parent Conference Day this past Tuesday, and Ms. Clodder will be speaking to that specifically when she does her portion of the reopening update. I also just want to recognize, I did it somewhat in jest in the email reminder for tonight's meeting, but sitting in this room over the course of the last few weeks, saw several volunteers from the community, but particularly want to recognize our Town Clerk's Office. Sandy Wright and her team have just done an outstanding job with the whole election process, and of course, all the many volunteers who work on Election Day itself. It runs so smoothly in our community, and just as a resident and a colleague, I just want to recognize that group for doing a really outstanding job under what were really certainly challenging circumstances, given the amount of early voting and mail-in ballots and the rest of it. And I think that the community can be very well assured that elections are run so well in Shrewsbury. I just want to thank, again, the Town Clerk's Office and all the volunteers. In connection to the election, I want to thank our educators for the work that they've been doing, working with our students, in terms of helping them in an age-appropriate way, be aware of what's happening with current events. Obviously, these are very interesting times. The high school did have its mock election last week. Interestingly, pretty similar results to what the community had. The Biden-Harris ticket was the winner, Markey for Senate, McGovern for Congress, DePaolo for Counselor, Moore for Senator, Kane for Representative. Register of Probate was Dolan, who was selected by the students. And for the ballot question, students voted yes on all of them. So other than ballot question number four was, I'm sorry, number two, rather, with ranked choice voting, the students chose yes, but the state did not, otherwise fairly well-aligned with what it looked like here in the community. But appreciate Jen D. Francesca, the Director of Social Sciences at the high school, for organizing that. And again, it's important for our students to learn about all the aspects of civics and our representative democracy. It's part of our school mission that our students learn how to be, or appreciate our democratic tradition here in our country, and, you know, our educators working. Even when there are controversial issues, it's our responsibility to make sure we're teaching about those in a way that's free of bias and prejudice, and that we, as an organization, of course, are politically neutral, but want to make our students understand the politics and the mechanisms of our democracy. So I want to thank all of our educators for the work they've been doing around that issue. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first-time scheduled appointment this evening will be an update on the school reopening. I'll turn it to Dr. Sawyer and staff.
Thank you. So I'm bringing up the slide deck here, and I'll bring up mine on my computer so I can follow along. I want to start with our key messages. Again, our health and safety of our students and families and our staff is our first priority. Our focus is to develop a safe school environment that prioritizes the well-being of everyone, including our students and staff, and enables high levels of learning, which is, of course, the core reason we exist as an organization. And that we're operating based on guidance from public health authorities, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We continue to closely monitor the latest information from medical experts as we certainly engaged last week with Dr. Serenello, which I thought was a very helpful session, and the evolving data regarding the pandemic, both here and across the state. Just want to again cite the reasons that I continue to be proud. You heard about our staff this week with Parent Conference Day. They keep going above and beyond to make all this work for our students. Our families continue to be very supportive of what we're trying to do as we're really trying to adapt in different ways. I do anticipate that we'll be sending out a survey to our families before the end of this week to get some feedback around how things are going, from their perspective, as well as from our staff. And then again, our students really have been terrific in terms of meeting all these expectations that have set out for them. I just came from the first part of the field hockey game at the high school and happened to see a staff member there who just talked about how the students have just been so outstanding, and I think appreciate the students who are in school, you know, having that opportunity, and really have been very cooperative about all the expectations laid out for them. Want to again recognize that, you know, as we know, it's really, really critical that everyone do their part to try to slow the spread of COVID-19 with masking, distancing, handwashing, sanitizing. The common sense piece outside of school, how we're connecting with each other, traveling, I'll speak to that again in a moment. We do have, of course, a new order from the governor that's going into effect Friday at midnight relative to stay-at-home advisory between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. in terms of the group size and wearing masks, really essentially anywhere in public. There have been some questions about whether that applied to the approach we use with masks in our schools. And of course, everyone is expected to be masked in our schools, with the only rare exception of a student whose disability may prevent them. And even in those cases, in many cases, the students have been able to adapt and wear them. However, there are mask breaks. That's part of what the expectation was from the Department of Education, given the length of time of the day that students are there and doing that in a safe way. None of that will change as a result of the governor's order. The public education schools, essentially K-12 schools, were exempted from that. So we will continue with the plan we've been using right along, you know, the governor's order really applies to the community at large, but not specifically to our schools. And of course, staying home if you don't feel well, that's another key piece, of course. If you feel you have some symptoms, even if you're not sure what they are, I would rather people stay out and get them monitored and taken care of than risk coming in and just in case someone happens to be infected with COVID-19. The governor's travel order has been in existence for some time. Of course, which states are designated as low-risk have changed depending on different statistics. With the Thanksgiving holiday coming up soon, I just want to remind everyone that part of our plan and part of the expectation, this applies, of course, to all residents of the Commonwealth, is that, you know, all members of our school community, is that if someone does travel to a state that's not designated as low-risk, that individual is expected to not return to school in person, whether that's a student, staff member, whoever it might be, until they receive a negative COVID-19 test according to the guidelines provided by the state. In terms of our staff, that will be the expectation. You know, in terms of students, if the family did not have them tested, they would need to be quarantined for 14 days before they return to school. I mean, you see the link there to the governor's travel order. But again, if people are making choices to travel for Thanksgiving, they are expected to follow the governor's order relative to when they would be able to return back to school. Just want to go through our statistics this week quickly. This week so far, we've had three cases. That means for hybrid, our hybrid model, that's up to 25 total since school started. We continue to have zero cases that have been traced to any exposures in school. So that's good news. The cases this week, we have not had any new cases in the remote program. We did start sending, this is the third week we've sent out our data dashboard on Mondays. That's just a screenshot from the one that went out this past Monday. And so we are, you know, continue to communicate by email with the school community if there was a positive case in that school community. But as far as communicating with the entire district, this is the mode that we now use on a weekly basis, so people know very transparently where we've had cases over the past week and what the cumulative numbers are. Also showing a four-week look back on positive cases in the district and the hybrid model. You can see that last week, the last full calendar week, we went down to a low mark of only three. Let's knock on wood that the three we've had are already this week. It's where we stay for this week. But that was good news that we're trending in the right direction in terms of the numbers of cases as of last week. In terms of the statistic that Johns Hopkins puts out, the positivity rate on a seven-day basis for Massachusetts is 1.78%. It's up a little bit from 1.59% a week ago. And you can see that's still well below the 5% threshold that's set by the World Health Organization as a benchmark for reopening or being in school and those kinds of things. This is the 14-day average for the positivity rate that the state reports on its weekly public health report. This was from last Thursday's last report that was published. Again, good news there, where the Shrewsbury rate had ticked down back to 1.52%. After moving up over time, it went back down. We'll hope to, we'll have to see where that goes in terms of the results that are released tomorrow. The case count for last week's report had Shrewsbury been reduced from the previous week, which was good news, was down to 8.2, which is just over the threshold for the red zone. The week prior, we were at 9.6. The week prior to that, we were at 8.0, which was the highest end of the yellow zone. Based on the case numbers that we've seen, I am cautiously optimistic that Shrewsbury will be back in the yellow zone when the report is released tomorrow. We will have to see, although we have seen, you know, a number of cases the last few days in town. They're reporting the cases on a day-by-day basis, and we've had some sevens the last few days. But from my understanding, from speaking with, through public health and with the town manager's office, continue to see clusters, in particular at the same address, essentially a family, whether it may be multiple cases, where there's the origin of the case happens, and then the family members contract it before they know that there's a case in the family. That's what we tend to see, and again, where the governor continues to ask families to be really considerate about their socialization with either extended family or friends and neighbors. Masking and distancing is really critical, and not letting our guard down is going to be important to try to keep this under control as far as the spread. This is just another, you can't really see it there, but just a reference again to the recent Rockefeller Foundation literature that came out relative to what schools should be considering relative to metrics and the kind of strategies, and that's something that we remain in the green area for Shrewsbury, which is good news. And then, again, want to reference that based on updated information that came from the Department of Public Health in late October, that we are being encouraged to remain open, even if the community is in the red zone, as long as there's no evidence of transmission in the schools. And you can see, again, we're at zero traces, cases traced to exposure in school as of, since the school year has begun, and that's something that we continue to look at carefully. We contact, trace carefully, and working with public health carefully. We're very pleased that the mitigation strategies we have in place appear to be working, and we're very happy to be in person and providing our students with those opportunities. See here, and then at this point, I will look to turn it over to Ms. Belcito, who has a brief update relative to work that her department is doing with families relative to special education.
I think, Dr. Sawyer, as a Student Services Department, regardless of the learning model chosen, this time in education certainly has been very challenging for some of our students, our staff, and our families. Teams have been faced with ensuring the best possible instruction and delivery of services, whether a student is remote, hybrid, or in person. I'm speaking tonight to share more information regarding services for our children. As many families have already experienced, learning plans were developed in order to address services and our learning models. Now we must move to the next phase of working with our families around a term called compensatory services. On August 17th, the Department of Education published guidance for schools and districts to help them work with families together to help students with individualized education programs recover as much as possible from the school disruptions that occurred because of COVID-19. Moving forward, there are two ways that families and the school district can discuss whether or not a child needs COVID compensatory services. The first is having an IEP meeting. The meeting can be with the full IEP team, and if the family decided it's not necessary to have the full team with everybody there, the family can meet with some team members. The school would certainly need permission to have an IEP meeting without usual members present. Another option is for families in the school districts together to choose not to convene an IEP meeting and discuss the child's need for the services, but to do it more informally. In this case, families may feel as though their child's needs can be met fully and effectively, efficiently by talking informally. It is the parent's choice whether to skip the IEP meeting and instead discuss their child's need for COVID compensatory services with the school-based personnel. If families decide that an IEP meeting is unnecessary, the district will document this in writing. All conversations with families regarding COVID compensatory services should take place by December 15th of this year. We issued a Google form a little over a week ago to solicit family input on what style of conversation was preferred. Either option will be followed up with written documentation to summarize the conversation regarding their children. How we determine the need for COVID compensatory services will be individualized. The individualized determination of the need of the service will be informed by a period of initial observation of the re-acclimation to learning and a review of data on recovery of learning loss and progress. Teams will consider whether and to what extent the student recouped the lost skills and/or behaviors, or has made effective progress, and whether and to what extent the students need compensatory services. Determinations of CCS by teams must be based on information provided by the parents and the data and the information available from other sources. And the information based will all be individualized to the students. For any questions regarding COVID compensatory services, families should reach out to the child's liaison or team chair. And as always, we look forward to working collaboratively in order to best serve our students and families.
Before we move on, I just have a question before we move to the next part. Any questions from Ms. Belcito? I just have a question. Thinking about these compensatory services, they're retroactive?
Yep. The timeframe for compensatory services to be considered is just from April through June. So we're only dealing with that timeframe when families think about services. I've had some families reach out asking, is this having to do with over the summer? Is this having to do with now, what we're seeing now, when the student comes into school? This particular piece of services has to do with just the closure. And then anything else, certainly the teams will work together and move forward in the best way possible.
Do you have any concerns about capacity to provide? Because this would be in addition to what's being provided now in the regular school year. Any concerns from you or your staff?
So right now, what we're looking at is our capacity. Right now, we're also looking at how we will go about providing these compensatory services. So we have to think about the intent and the purpose of a student's IEP. So when we have the conversations with families, it isn't necessarily like you look at a service delivery grid and it's going to say, well, they must have missed this between April and June. It's more about a conversation about what is the purpose of the student's IEP? How did the student do with the services that were provided? Because that did count towards a free, appropriate public education during that time, what was offered. But it's more about collecting the data, how did they re-acclimate coming into school, and then looking at all of that to determine the best way to provide these services. As a department, we're continuing to have the conversations because the days are already full. The schedules are quite full for the students and the staff. So we're looking at the best way that we could possibly do this in a timely way, but then also what's going to be, you know, a way for our students to not only recoup, but also be successful.
Right, great. Thank you. Any more? No. Dr. Sawyer?
No, I certainly want to thank Ms. Belcito and the Special Education Team Department has been doing really outstanding work, and it's been not only the day-to-day planning of specialized instruction and working, doing everything they can to meet the needs of their students who have a range of different needs, of course, but also there have been these very intricate and demanding, I don't use the right word because I don't want to misphrase, but demands from the state relative to the legal obligations that flow from some federal expectations, of course, as well as state expectations. And it has been not necessarily the easiest thing for us to implement. And of course, we're layering multiple things on top of these staff members who are already working really hard just on the day-to-day work. So I think you identified that, Ms. Fritz. And figuring out ways we can make this sustainable for our students and our staff is going to continue to be important, and that goes for all of our educators, but particularly for those who are working in our special education field. And I just want to express my appreciation to them and to Ms. Belcito and her team for their leadership on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, Ms. Clodder will do an update around curriculum instruction and assessment with a focus on the way we're communicating and conferencing and adapting given the circumstances we're facing.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. In schools, one of the highlights of November is Conference Day. And so for tonight's update, I wanted to talk a little bit about how we've managed to meet individually with parents and how we've welcomed them formally into this next normal from a curriculum standpoint. And I think the term that you used, Ms. Seffernin, was ducking and swerving. And I think that, you know, technology has enabled us to make connections in new ways and also to kind of highlight some strengths that I think in a traditional format weren't apparent. And although it's not been easy, I'm really impressed by the creativity that you noticed. So I'm sure our educators will appreciate that recognition. So as it states, on nearly all of our communications, we see parents as partners. And this is one of our creative educators, Pam Darling at Patton. I had the pleasure of walking around the building on Conference Day, and initially, it was kind of eerie because it was empty. And that's not how we think about Conference Day, but it was still lively, and there was a lot of laughter. I interrupted several teachers at work, and I tried to do that in the least disruptive way possible. But you can kind of see from the screen, the exchanges back and forth, and Ms. Darling is kind of surrounded by samples of work in ways that you would kind of normally typically exchange in person. So the topic of student workload has been something that, you know, from our former presentations, has been timely, and thinking about how we give feedback. You know, we want students to engage in a full learning day, but it doesn't mean we want them to be online for the duration of a remote learning day. And we want students to have access to live teaching, but we want that teaching to be really focused on how to meet individual needs. And so one of the things that was a real benefit of having Parent Conference Day was getting a sense about how students are experiencing learning model. Where are the strengths? Where are the struggles? What are the places where students are getting bogged down with lack of organizational skills or self-regulation skills? And, you know, as Ms. Belcito mentioned, one of the things we're obligated to do is to kind of consult with families about the impact of the gap in terms of last year's closure. And thinking about, you know, in a normal year, in the fall, we would assess students and think about who experienced summer regression, because regression is something that we typically see in a subset of students. We have a bigger kind of consult to do with students and families around that. And particularly for young families, it was really gratifying for teachers to be able to connect in a personal way, one-on-one, and get some of that information. So let's see. The other piece that was helpful is to see how some of the changes that we've put into practice are working from a parent perspective. So for example, some of the ways that we've been trialing how students can ask for help when they're working remotely, some things that work for older students, like filling out a Google form to alert the team that there's a struggle, and then the team can assign who's going to follow up. That works really well at Sherwood. We piloted it grade four. It doesn't work so well there. So thinking about, you know, not only how we're getting information about individual students, but how we're getting information about some of the problem solving we're engaged in was really helpful. And I think that there's a real interest in thinking about how do we replicate that, even though we don't have a formal Conference Day going forward. So what is the feedback that we've been getting from parents, aside from student information? Parents are glad to be back in person, or they're glad to have their students back in person. But not surprisingly, they want more teacher interaction, particularly on remote days, and particularly for youngest students. In terms of older students, students and parents in Cohort D, the fully remote model at the high school, appreciate the support of the coordinators, and they want more of that support. And content coaching, you know, the ability to get that live chat support within the platform is something we purchased on the program, but we're finding that it entails longer waits than we anticipated. And so we've been working with the company on that. Just today, the coordinators had additional training on how to adjust the pacing of the workload that students are assigned, and that will allow some greater flexibility, which is another thing that students and families have been asking. So in addition to getting really valuable information about individual students, it's really helpful to get some systemic feedback about how some of the problem solving that we've already implemented is working or not working. So for the most part, we're not talking about really big changes, but small adjustments that kind of lighten the load for students and families, and more importantly, put the focus on instruction that's engaging, connecting students to the content to each other. And that's something I think we underestimated, is how hungry students are to connect with each other, even around something as simple as lunchtime. And when we built out the schedule to maximize student support and student learning, we didn't think about connecting students over lunchtime. How we can connect students to the school community at large and some of the events that make school special for kids, and how we celebrate high-quality work. So we're still working on some of those issues, but I think we've made some progress even from looking at how things have worked from the beginning of the year. At the middle school level, teachers don't send out individual sign-up forms for parents to conference about students, but they do have a traditional curriculum night. And so thinking about how they hold a virtual meet-and-greet has been the focus at Sherwood and Oak. I want to share with you kind of ways that they have talked about orienting parents to Schoology, which is the format that students use to submit work at Sherwood, how to help families find remote plans. You'll remember from last year that that You'll remember from last year that that was something we got some really helpful feedback about, that that was cumbersome and maybe inconsistent from team to team, so Sherwood has been working on that. What are some reasonable expectations for live and asynchronous work? How teams communicate and how parents should reach out and/or coach students about how to reach out to their team, as well as kind of contact information. And there was time also for parents to ask questions, although at the middle level, the questions are less about students and more in general about the middle school curriculum. I'm just going to play the first 50 seconds or so of this because I think it gives you a flavor of how the Red Team at Oak introduced themselves to families. This is Dan Waite, Natalie Amaral, Jen Dufo, Maury Egan, and Jody Miller at Eight Red at Oak.
So I will get things started. My name is Dan Waite and I'm a science teacher on Eight Red. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to our Curriculum Afternoon. It's certainly been an interesting year for all of us, as I'm sure it has been for you. And we have enjoyed so far opportunity to get to know everybody and slowly start to tackle this crazy year. It's been an adjustment for us, as I'm sure it's been for you. And we appreciate all of your help and participation in trying to make this a successful school year for all of your children. On that note, we can get things kicked off.
So you can see, it's quite a long video featuring each member of the team and kind of what their role is and what are some things that are really critical for students and families to know. The next piece I'm going to show you is from Kate Mercadante, who's a general music educator, sorry Brian, and the orchestra teacher at the high school. And actually, this video was shared as an exemplar with the whole faculty and then helped to kind of frame how individual members would introduce parents to courses and course expectations. And this one, I think, we should watch the whole way through because it blends that building relationships aspect of reaching out to parents and also specific information about a course.
Hello, my name is Kate Mercadante and I'm your child's intro to guitar teacher and I want to welcome you to Curriculum Night 2020. Before I dive in to start talking about the course and what your child will be learning this semester, I think it's helpful to know a little bit about me, since I am spending a couple hours every week with them. So I have a bachelor's and master's degree in music education and I'm currently working on my master's in educational leadership and management. I have nine years of teaching experience, four of which have been at Shrewsbury High School. And I've experienced teaching middle school and high school, general music, and orchestra. I also think it's helpful for you to know my philosophy as an educator. So whether it be through lesson planning or just interactions with students, it's always my goal to guide students to be strong in character, positive in attitude, patient collaborators, prepared for and resilient when facing difficult challenges, and determined to achieve high levels of excellence. And frankly, I think this is really easy because I truly do believe we have the best students at Shrewsbury High School. So what will your child learn in Intro to Guitar? This is a one semester course designed to enhance students' appreciation for music by learning how to play the guitar. So we cover the basics of the instrument and then also music theory fundamentals, including music notation and chord symbols. And then we also study the role of the guitar in various genres of music. So throughout this course, it is my goal to develop your child's musical skills as well as their social emotional skills. So we're going to work on developing their musical skills and understanding of how they can make a positive contribution to the ensemble. We will work on developing each student's ability to listen, analyze, describe, and evaluate musical performances. And then we're also going to work on some social emotional skills like individual and group effort, cooperation, tolerance, community, self-respect, perseverance, and personal responsibility. So what does Intro to Guitar look like? You guys have already received a couple videos from me showing off your child's talents with their peers. And I'll continue taking videos throughout the semester to update you on your child's developing skills on the guitar. But really, what it looks like is we start usually each day with warming up and playing a couple simple songs. And then every day, we just take one step further, learning new notes, learning new chords, and then just having a lot of fun along the way. I promise, behind these masks are a bunch of smiles. I think building relationships with students and building relationships between students is what makes for the ultimate educational experience for everyone in the classroom. Within the hybrid learning model, I think it's helpful for you to know how I'm treating each type of lesson. So during in-person lessons, I'm really introducing core concepts to students live. And then their asynchronous assignments reinforce those core concepts that I've taught in person. And along the way, whether it be in-person or asynchronous, I am giving feedback to students constantly to clarify for them and also to you their progress towards mastery of these core concepts. Also, because of the hybrid learning model, students who did not have a guitar at home have been given one to take home. And assignments on asynchronous days are sometimes through an app called Smart Music, which is a phenomenal tool for students to learn how to play musical instruments and how to read standard notation. And music theory work is usually taking place on Schoology and it's used to strengthen students' note-reading skills. My grading policy is available on Schoology and you can expect to see about one grade being put into the gradebook per week. And in Schoology, which I update constantly, you can find information on upcoming assignments and assessments. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns. I'm always available through my email and I think communication is key in the fields of education. So whether it be something you hear about at the dinner table or you just have another question about a grade or anything like that, feel free to contact me. And last but not least, I wanted to say thank you. Whether or not your child verbalizes it, it means a lot to them that you support them in their educational and musical endeavors. So thank you for taking the time out of your day to watch this video and I hope you have a wonderful evening. Take care. Bye.
So I think in five minutes, that captures a whole lot about how we've managed to kind of replicate some of the best pieces of in-person greetings, how teachers are really being thoughtful about how learning goals translate in a hybrid model and what to talk about when they're live with students and what to push out asynchronously. The app that she mentioned is actually not the one initially that the music department had experimented with. So I think it also speaks to the collaboration within that department that that's ultimately the one that they grew to consensus on because Tom O'Toole, who's the director of the department, recognized everybody needed to use the same app. But they put in a lot of hours kind of thinking about how to make the best of their coursework work. And then finally, I think, holding on to kind of the communication piece and what it means in terms of parent involvement, even though I think parents feel a little bit at a distance, given all of the remote learning. I think that really captures a lot of the learning our educators are doing is they're trying to strike this balance between moving the curriculum forward and not wanting to move so fast that they leave the relationship piece behind. So another piece that happens during parent conferences is we typically share kind of assessments. We talk a little bit about how students need to close gaps, where they are relative to grade level benchmarks. We've shared in previous updates that our expectations in terms of curriculum standards haven't changed this year, but we can anticipate that we might have kids who are unaffected by the closure. We might have kids that are behind as a result of the closure. We might have kids that did more reading as a result of the closure and they may be actually more skillful. So one of the things that's next on our to-do list is to really think about, together with timely information from families, how we can take traditional assessments and translate them into this new learning plan. And so, you know, the other piece that's important along with that is thinking about how to structure small groups. And we know that small groups are most effective when we group kids according to need. So we have the old assessment, for example, at the elementary level, the developmental reading assessment and running records, which are long-established best practice where a teacher reads with a student in person, notes kind of where they're accurate and where they've made mistakes and what that says about their reading strategies. And then usually has them do some writing. And so you can imagine the reading and the miscue piece would happen in person. The writing follow-up might happen individually, independently. We're also moving to using a more universal screener so that we can start to prioritize which students should receive the most instruction, which students are kind of at or close to benchmark. And one of the things that we are finding is that, you know, sometimes we might have the majority, like typically in grade four, you'd have students enter at, you know, a level 40. They might be at level 38. And so we're kind of encouraged by what we're finding about students. And we're looking forward to kind of implementing the screener tool. One of the things we didn't anticipate, I think, was how short collaboration time would be, particularly when we wanted Wednesdays to then become makeup days when we had disrupted weeks. So trying to find a time when we could train teachers on the new universal screener has been something we've put on the back burner. And although it's important, we've kind of started with informal and more familiar assessments so that we can get some initial data and then we've got prioritized kind of which students we need more assessment data on so that when we can get that training complete, likely in mid-November, we'll be able to start implementing the new screener. And then we can compare our traditional assessments with this data from the screener tool. But that's next on our to-do list and likely the topic of a December update. In the meantime, you can see that, you know, this is Wendy Moran, who's also a Patton educator, who would prefer to be looking at her work than looking at the camera when I was taking the picture. Again, I give Patton a lot of credit for just like going with the flow as I interrupted them meeting with people. But our curriculum hasn't changed and so we have ways of checking kids' progress kind of in a formative way as they're working and then more assumptive as they finish a unit. And so she's surrounded by, you know, anecdotal evidence of students' writing skills and their analysis skills. And those are the things that really informed our initial conversations with parents. And again, we've been listening from parents to see kind of where are the areas of struggles with the instructional plans that kids are having right now and how does that tell us about their performance overall. At the high school, because they don't have Conference Day in the same way, it's a professional development day. And so I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge the work of actually the Student Services Team in that agenda item. They talked a lot about how to improve instructional strategies in a remote environment and how to kind of think about translating assessments because they don't want to lose teaching time to assessment time. So how can they think about capturing authentic assessment, but in a different way? And they also talked a lot about kind of mental health. And I want to credit Megan DeLeon and Naowen, who are the Director of Student Special Education and also School Counseling, for working together on thinking a little bit about the levels of support we provide for mental health. And that they likened this analogy to, you know, a volcano looks really nice at a distance until it starts to erupt. So what are some signs that we look for? And what are some strategies that all staff need to keep in mind in terms of what students get to keep everything going well? And then what do some kids need in order to function? And then what more do kids need if they're having a crisis? And so this is just to help all staff at the high school understand kind of what the pre-referral process would look like if there was a concern and to make sure everybody was on the same page, not just thinking about kind of academic progress, but also how students are functioning from a social-emotional standpoint. So our goal is for kids to be safe, smart, healthy, and well at all levels. I think, you know, it's been a really unusual time, made more difficult by outside stressors, concerns about isolation for students and mental health, growing awareness and concern about issues of race and equity and the election. And every time I'm in a school building, I'm really impressed by the commitment that our educators are making to ensure that schools remain safe and productive places, to talk about hard things and to work through some of the challenges we're having, you know, from outside events, but also just internally making this next normal as helpful to kids as it can be. So I appreciate your patience. Well, I shared some of those longer videos, but I think they really do give you a flavor of how teachers are being creative.
Thank you. That's our report on the update on reopening for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Dale?
There's a lot here and I just want to back you up a little bit. You may have said it and I missed it, but nonetheless, I'd like to have you tell me a little bit more about regression. You know, typically, my understanding is that there's an objective measure of achievement at the end of the year. Another measure, maybe around October, September, somewhere around there. And you kind of look at the delta to get a sense about regression. How are you handling it with the way, you know, what's, how do you measure it and what's it look like?
So I'm going to use reading as an analogy because I think it's the simplest to follow. But students have a benchmark that they meet at the end of the year. And so you want students to be able to read with a certain degree of fluency. And we measure that by kind of thinking about how much reading material they can get through in a certain period and whether they understand what they've read. Because some students are beautiful at reading out loud, but then you ask them a question about what they read and they don't recall it. So you're looking both at comprehension and kind of word calling. And, you know, we exit first grade on benchmark at a certain level. So then at the beginning of second grade, you can check a student's level. And you can do that in a couple of ways. You could use the formal assessment or you could use kind of an informal, here's a leveled text that that's that same place that they should have exited with. How are they reading that? And different teachers have used a combination of strategies. I'm going to start out with the informal, sitting with you with the text that you should be able to read at your level. Because we also have kind of the expectation that one, even if a student is new to our system, that a beginning second grader would be at about this level. So I'm going to start off with a guided reading text that's about that level and see how you do. And then I can either adjust it down if you seem to be struggling with five or more errors or I can adjust it up if it seems like it's really simple for you. And again, they ask questions about the content. So it's pretty typical over the summer. You know, some students are consistently reading and doing a great job and they, our goal is for really for them to hold steady because we know that they'll make another full year of progress the following year. Some kids may not read at all over the summer and so they come back into second grade and the first three weeks as readers and writers, they don't look like they did at the end of first grade. And you say, wait a minute, you know, I know this kid is capable of reading. I have your score right here for this. And sometimes all kids need is a little bit of time to orient. Sometimes they've really lost a level and it takes a good three months to get them back to where they were. And it really depends on the individual student. So the way you'd address that is different. And as writers, sometimes all it takes is saying, you know what, I'm going through your Cume folder and this is really amazing because, wait a minute, aren't you Lily? This is your writing assessment and I'm looking at this spelling and this attention to detail. I'm like, this is what I just got from you. Like, is that really the same? The student kind of sheepishly picks up the paper, goes down, says, okay, so she knows. I can do better with this. Because, you know, kids who don't like to write might rush through that. And so you have to sort out as a teacher, who's rushing it? Who's avoiding it? Who's really struggling with something because they don't have recall of the strategies you taught? And depending on how students fall into those different buckets, you have a different approach. But the challenge is really to make sure kids get what they need. And not all kids need the same amount of remediation to make that progress.
So just in follow-up here, there are a couple of things. One is, as I listen to you, it almost sounds like there's some variation in the way teachers measure progress or regression or whatever we're going to call it. Is there a standard approach throughout the district? Or is there a level of discretion teacher by teacher?
So we do have the expectation that we administer a formal assessment to every student. We administer it a different number of times based on those results. So if students are at benchmark, we assess them less because we're less concerned about them. If they're below benchmark, they get assessed on a more regular basis. And it's a combination of formal assessments and informal assessments. What I mentioned when we're talking about the universal screener tool is going to a less subjective measure that's spanning not just the elementary, but also the middle school grades. And the hope is to test, because this is really a question for us. We've never done it as a district. What's, what different kinds of data do we get when we take that approach? So we don't want to forego the assessment that's been working really well for us because our kids are achieving as readers really well. But we also want to see if we can gain something with more uniformity of approach, particularly when it comes to structuring intervention.
One last follow-up, that's okay. And that is, if you can measure a student's progress or regression from June to September, I imagine there's a way of pooling things so that you can kind of look at first graders in June this year and last year and get a sense as to how we ended the year last spring and how that compared to the year prior.
Yeah, we focused our priority on looking at first grade because I think our biggest concern is how well we're teaching reading remotely at that crucial age. We know anecdotally from looking at kind of grade four data in different pools. And again, I haven't pulled all this information together across schools. I've just been, you know, kind of a data geek, talking to the coaches and principals at individual level. at individual levels. But it seems to me, we've had some regression kind of in the average for everybody as, you know, not unexpected. And I think the key is to think about kind of what that looks like overall. Does it hold? Is it temporary? And does it, does it bear out when we do full formal testing for everyone? Because we've tried to really maximize teaching time when kids are in school. And for some students, for example, that when I first started talking about a student, if you gave them a text that was too hard, you might go back lower and give them another text or lower even still. The same thing applies. For some students, they might read, you know, three to five different texts in this one assessment setting. And that would be kind of all that student might experience that week in our remote, in our new hybrid model. And so teachers have been cautious about spending too much time on assessment if they can pull kids together in small groups and assess them informally with some of the same techniques.
Do we know how June of nineteen looks like compared to June of twenty?
No.
For reading first grade?
Not yet.
Okay.
And we were not able to do the assessment last June because we were not set up the way we are now.
Okay.
Mostly asynchronous work. So the last set of data we would have had would have been
March.
Last March, right before the shutdown in terms of that. So we don't have, we don't have a year-end comparison. So that's part of the work that's happening now is to do some of this assessment of reading where we're at and then to add this universal screening tool to make sure that, you know, if we're seeing anything that are red flags, we're picking those up. Because again, fortunately, you know, we do have situations, as Ms. Clodagh referenced, where, you know, students may have done, and we see this with, you know, educated families and districts like ours, demographically, sometimes you see acceleration over the summer rather than regression.
Right.
And I'm sure that was the case in some, in some areas. But I think what we're seeing initially is that there has been some regression. We're very confident that we're going to be able to overall, you know, catch kids up over time. But it is something that, you know, it's really a, it's both, you know, an art and a science at this point in terms of trying to govern the amount of time we're spending on these pieces. And looking into this, this universal screener will be something that we'll report out on once we're able to do that effectively.
Yeah. And I think for now, we've tried to informally assess in order to prioritize who we formally assess first.
Yeah.
If that makes any sense.
It does. Thank you.
Jason.
On a related note, understanding that this would be anecdotal, that we haven't, to Dr. McGee's question and Dr. Sor's response, that we haven't done the actual formal comparison. Anecdotally, are there any areas of particular concern? I know that you just alluded to reading in the first grade. Are there grade levels in subject matters where you're either particularly concerned for one reason or another, maybe hearing something paying particular attention? Again, understanding that this is, this is perhaps anecdotal.
Not yet. I think we're more hungry for information. And I think that, you know, parent conferences are kind of now behind us, but we haven't debriefed with teams about them. So I think that that's another key source of information. I mean, one of the things that's really interesting is we provided tools for students to practice some of their math skills over the summer. And we had some terrific rates, particularly at certain grade levels like kindergarten. So I'm interested to see, like, so what is that, that we were acknowledged by ST Math for having more kindergarteners participate than any other community in the Commonwealth, which is really exciting. But I'm curious to see, how does that translate into student work in terms of the problem-solving assessment? So we administer different problem-solving tasks for students where it covers content that they should know, but they have to apply it in order to figure out a puzzle. And I'm curious to see, is there a correlation there between some of the practice that they've done, particularly at that grade level? The other piece is, you know, sometimes kids didn't practice math in that way. And I'm sure they had other ways of practicing math, but it didn't, it didn't get utilized in the platform the way we had. So we had hoped that if every student had some encouragement over the summer to use the Freckle platform to practice reading and math, then we would have some data at the get-go based on their summer experience. And that hasn't panned out as well as we'd hoped. So we still have to do some of that, you know, common assessment work in order to kind of glean student math skills. And we're in the process of trying to pull that together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My question really gets to, you know, is a really important topic. So thanks for the update. But making sure, our responsibility in many ways is to think about, are the resources allocated to solve the problem that you're, that you're seeing? And I'm particularly thinking about literacy tutors. I know they did in second grade, the literacy tutors did some assessments. My daughter was enrolled in one, got an extra special Zoom to do that. And then the anecdotal sort of early conversation, it wasn't all back yet. We're still waiting. And I know that with that, you know, we're probably not going to have a literacy tutors, sufficient literacy tutors for the need that we have because everybody's moved backwards. And we made a decision last spring that we were, literacy tutors were one of the things that were on the, that unfortunately we had to make some reductions. And so, you know, what's, what's important to me is that we continue to tie that back, right? Like, so where is the gaps? And are we, are we able to put the resources where, or can we even adapt? Because, you know, do we have the tools? So as we hear more from you as the year goes on, you know, not wanting to wait, but to say, okay, we're going to really need to beef up over here because, because of some of the regression that we're seeing. And, you know, I'm not at all surprised you start with reading. If a child can't read in elementary school, we have got a long problem to work on. But I'm sure there are other areas as well, math and others, you know, so the core subject matter. And so this, I'm not asking you for an answer right now, but it was certainly, you know, just as a parent thinking about, you know, that many other parents were hearing, well, your child might need tutoring, but we probably are going to have a waitlist. We're going to have to figure out what that looks like. And I'm thinking, I made a choice on that end, what was, what was important. And we had to prioritize some things. So I'd love to hear as we go forward, where are the places and opportunities for us to be thinking, do we need, do we need to pivot and swerve a little bit? And, and, and think, and think about how do we find the resources to make sure our kids are meeting some really important benchmarks?
I'll have more information about that.
Sure.
I know that it's likely that we probably have more need than we have literacy tutors. And that coupled with kind of paraprofessional support is definitely going to impact our ability to support kids, particularly on asynchronous days.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. John.
Just a quick comment. Press my appreciation to the Schuylkill High School educators for my daughter. We went through a remote curriculum night yesterday. Throughout the day, had consistent emails from each of our teachers. And having attended curriculum night in the last four years in person, I found the information just as effective as you showed here, getting the same level of information and detail that I would if I were in person. As you mentioned, a new way to connect with teachers. And just, I thought it was great. So thank you to all.
Oh, that's great. I'm sure any educator watching will be so happy to hear that.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, I think with COVID, there's been challenges and opportunities. You know, we're seeing both. And I agree with Ms. Heffernan, that whole resources piece is something I think this committee, we're going to have to look at this year as well as into the next year budget cycle because things are changing. I really like hearing, you know, these parent-teacher conferences, you know, in the middle and high school, the way we're looking at what our traditional curriculum night was. Maybe these are ways that we can do things differently with, you know, working families and families who have caretaker responsibilities and having the opportunity to attend where in the past they might not have been able to go on the particular night it was held. So I think there's some opportunities and we're learning to do things differently with technology that may be beneficial down the road and actually meet more needs. So I think it's an opportunity to, you know, and as we look at these technology increases, we're also, I'm concerned about the increase in lack of social interaction with students and mental health issues that we're seeing. So there's so many, like Dale said, there's a lot here to deal with. But I also am very impressed with the amount of work that the district leadership has done, the teachers, from where we were to where we are now. It hasn't been that long of a time. We have more work to do, but we're definitely moving forward and not thinking we would ever be doing it in this manner. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah, I glossed over the ability to screencast and simultaneously show your video. And I think about the amount of learning that educators have put into their presentations overall since we, since this initial closure is really impressive.
It is, absolutely. Dr. Sor, any questions or comments?
Well, I thank Ms. Clodagh for her presentation. And again, I think you captured it, that there's a lot of things, a lot of really hard work that's happening to adapt. And there are certainly, I think, we see it as administrators, you have a to-do list that's very long and there's only so many hours in the day. And it's a lot of prioritizing and triaging as to what's the most important, highest leverage work we need to do. And we're going to keep, you know, keep on doing that. At the same time, you know, trying to make sure that people are able to sustain what they're doing. Because obviously, we're six weeks plus in. It's a long school year ahead. We'll have to see what the winter and the spring bring. But again, our folks are working really hard to try to provide everything they can under sort of some really challenging circumstances. And I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, our next time scheduled appointment is the annual report for student enrollment and class size. Each year, the district is required to provide a report on enrollment as of October 1st to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And Dr. Sor will provide that report.
Thank you. Mr., I just sent an updated version because I had caught a typo to Mr. LaRue. So he'll bring that up in a moment. But every year, we report out, October 1st is the date that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education utilizes for year-over-year comparisons that have important factors, including the number that's used each year and the Chapter 70 formula for school districts. And I want to report out to the school committee and the community what we're seeing in terms of enrollment and class size. Typically, this is accompanied with a detailed report from the high school. I gave them some extra time to work on it because they had some other things they needed to get done. And so that'll be coming likely the second meeting in November, if not the first meeting in December. But I do have some overall data for the high school here as well. We do have some key enrollment data that I want to share. Much like the case for other school districts across the Commonwealth, we have fewer students this year than we did the previous year. We're down 258 students overall, just a shade under 6,000 students. Where typically, the last couple of years, we've been at about 6,250. Our grades, preschool to grade four is a little over 2,100. Again, down over 200 students from last year. The biggest drop is in our preschool, which was to be expected because we made a strategic decision not to provide any remote preschool educational services to students who did not qualify for special education. So only, only students who have an IEP and whose families chose they were not comfortable sending their child in person or getting remote learning. Otherwise, our students are coming in to the typical in-person classes, which are a mix of students with IEPs and students who are typically developing and not, do not have a disability. In kindergarten, we're down 71 students. We don't have great data on exactly why this is. The anecdotal data is that there are families who, looking at the situation with remote learning and/or hybrid learning, you know, kindergarten is not a requirement. Families can always choose to hold their child back for a year. And I think many have just decided to keep their child home an extra year and wait it out and see what life is like a year from now when they may start their child at that point. In some cases, you know, it may have been a different situation. They may have opted for, where there might have been more in-person, protection, private school setting, for example. We are offering full day for all of our students. That's really, but of course, it's on a hybrid basis. So it's a little bit different. And then I'll mention later in the presentation, and I don't have this data by grade, but just overall, we have seen some increase in homeschooling students as well. But kindergarten is down about 70 students and then 33 students overall in grades one through four. At the middle level, we're down about 35 students, 1,950. And at the high school, we have only 17 fewer. We're at 1,875. So those are the numbers we have for enrollment. I'm going to go through a few slides quickly just to show some visuals. You can see there that's our history over the past decade of enrollment. So it had been pretty steady at just over 6,000 and climbed up by a couple hundred students about three years ago or so, four and three, four years ago. And it held about there. And then now we're back down to about 5,900. If you look by grade level, this really illustrates the lower preschool and kindergarten numbers. And then you see, you know, roughly anywhere from 400 to 500, depending on the cohort of class size. And typically cohorts tend to grow a little bit over time, up until grade eight. And then there's a drop-off when we have students who go off to Assabette or to private high schools for the grade nine experience. For kindergarten, you can see the enrollment bops up and down there a little bit. And we know that's always been a tricky one to predict because oftentimes it depended on how many full-day slots we could offer and families making decisions based on their needs. Again, down this year, but we believe that's related to COVID. And again, that's something that we're seeing in districts across the state. For grade one, pretty steady, down a little bit, but not that different than what we've seen over time. The increase from kindergarten to grade one, you can see on a percentage basis, not that far outside of what we've seen for some norms at different times. And again, that depended on how many students might have opted for a private full-day K and then came into the public system in grade one. We assume that's going to start smoothing out over time as we open the new Beal and we'll have, you know, universal kindergarten in a typical setting, hopefully, by the time next year rolls around. The next one is, just shows you grade one enrollment by school. You can kind of get a sense across those schools. We see some numbers down a little more at Patton and Spring Street this year compared to where we're at Coolidge and Floral Street. Actually, a slight increase over what they had the previous years. Kindergarten, again, as mentioned, this is the percentage of full-day students. It's wonderful to see that 100% bar, although it's under some different kinds of conditions. And then we're looking forward when the new school opens to be there going forward and not having to worry about not having all of our students have that opportunity and that educational experience. Preschool, you can see the drop-off there, you know, October 1st. And typically, from October 1st, the rest of the year, the preschool grows as three-year-olds become eligible for services. But this year, you know, we have many fewer due to the fact that we're not offering remote. And we had a lot of folks who opted not to send their child in person. These are the next several slides are just by school. You can see Beal, as a result of that K reduction, is down to about 250 students. So overall, down from about 310 last year. Coolidge is actually slightly up by almost 30 students this year. Floral Street has dropped down a bit. And, you know, some of that, we think, is the demographic piece around grade one being off a little bit and then not entirely sure why. But it's a little bit lower than it has been in other years recently. Patton is holding a little bit lower than last year, but it threw just over 350. Spring Street is down to really a low over the last five years of 332 students. And you'll hear the presentation a little bit later on about redistricting. And of course, that's something we're looking at very carefully is what student population is and how that's distributed across the, across the district. Sherwood is again, holding fairly steady in a similar zone to where they have been over the past five years. Same with Oak, down slightly, but pretty similar to what it was last year. And then the high school, as I mentioned earlier, dropped off a bit from there. They peaked last year at 1,892 students. We had a few more students go to Assabette than we have had the last few years. And privates, you know, stayed pretty similar. And some of that is just the demographic, different cohorts, different years, have different populations. This next slide is the, just breaking down the learning preference between people who chose hybrid or remote. There's a small number in yellow of people who didn't chose any that, when they pulled the data. We had some people who were enrolled, but were, had yet to be assigned, hadn't made their choice yet. But essentially, the red and the blue, the red is the in-person hybrid and the blue is the number of students who chose to be full-remote. Smallest percentage at the high school, not surprising because families are trying to prioritize, making sure that students have an experience academically that they feel is connected to what they need. And the socialization piece, of course. We do have some different, pretty similar across the middle schools with about 320, 340 students out of the roughly 960 to almost 1,000 students in those two schools. Floral Street's an outlier where there's actually more students who chose remote. Over 350 chose to stay remote and about 325 are in a hybrid model. The other, Coolidge is a little bit, not quite as dramatic, you know, not as a majority in hybrid, but a pretty even split or closer to even split. And then a smaller percentage, about 25% at Patton and Spring Street, who stayed all-remote. Beal is also an outlier in that they have more remote students there than they do actually in-person. And then Parker Road, we're not serving the, other than special education and remotes. That number is very small. These next few slides show some other special populations. There are out-of-district students, we're up to 63, very similar to what it was last year. We'd had a downward trend over three years and it's back up to not quite as high as it was in 2016, but it's gone in that direction. For, as I mentioned, the vocational technical school enrollment is a little higher than it's been in recent years. They did accept more students in the freshman class. And so we're, have 113 students enrolled at Assabette at this point. I mentioned homeschool, you know, we don't tend to have many homeschool students in our community. Last year, and as of October 1st, there were 20, and that did double. And we know, we've seen articles about learning pods and parents, families sort of opting out and homeschooling, you know, using their own private tutors. I can't say we've seen a lot of that and we don't really have a sense. But, you know, we did, obviously, it's a, it's a large increase with a relatively small number, not a big impact on the district. But clearly, some families making the decision that they felt the homeschool situation that they are somehow providing that educational experience was a preference for them under the circumstances this year with COVID. Just want to remind people, the school committee class size guidelines, you know, 17 to 19 in kindergarten, 20 to 22 in the grades, first, grades one and two, primary grades. Grades three through eight, 22 to 24 is the target. And then for the high school, it's 18 to 20. And again, not including sort of larger performance classes or PE. In terms of the class size history, this is in your packet, and people can look at these slides. We send the link out tomorrow or be available on our website. You know, we have our, some pretty low numbers for kindergarten because our numbers are down. And we also have the other piece where we have, you know, lost some efficiencies, where we have some remote classes and some in-person classes. And we also don't have a lot of space. For example, you know, in order to physically fit students in a classroom with physical distancing at Beal, where we have smaller classrooms, we have a maximum of 10 seats. There's a maximum of 12 at Floral Street, which has bigger classrooms, a more modern school. And so, you know, you're really kind of looking at some limitations there for the in-person as well. For class size for elementary, you can see at the bottom, second to last row, nothing's in yellow. Nothing in elementary is, is overall on an average basis. And this includes all, both our remote and our hybrid classes, just all of our students divided by the numbers of sections. You know, the good news is we don't have anything that's over-enrolled or outside the class size guidelines. Although, I'll speak to our remote situation in a bit. At the middle level, you can see that, you know, given the number of sections we have, and we did cut two positions, two team teaching sections last year at Sherwood. And that pushed, puts some pressure on class size as well. We're slightly above, you know, in the yellow zone there in fifth, sixth, and eighth grade. And we're right at the top end of the guideline at 24 in the seventh grade. But I do want to bring to the attention of the school committee some comparisons of class size of the hybrid sections versus the remote. We do have at the elementary level, 70 hybrid sections. They're averaging about 17 students. That includes some small 10-student classes at Beal, I would think there's one outlier, but some smaller kindergarten classes, all the way up to some 23s. And of course, those 20, those are spread across, not all the students are there at the same time because of the alternating schedule. We have 37 remote sections that are all remote at the elementary level. They're averaging about 23 students and they range anywhere from 20 to 27 in a class. We have some third grades with some 27s that are just because, again, the numbers of people who opted into those. At Sherwood, our hybrid sections, we're averaging just a shade under 24, which is in the school committee's range. Ranging anywhere from 18 to 28 students in a class, the individual sections. And our remote sections, we're averaging 28 students, which is much higher than I would like it to be. In a range of 27 to up to 32, which is certainly not what we like to see in a class size. Because it's all remote, we don't have a physical space issue, of course, but it is a heavier load for the educators who are working with those students. And we're doing some work internally to see if there's ways to help mitigate some of the effect of that. But there is some concern that if we saw some families making the choice, which the state is allowing, to move from hybrid to all-remote, that's going to put more pressure and we don't really have any more room at the end, so to speak. So how are we going to deal with that? And, you know, we'd like to avoid adding additional staff for financial reasons, because, you know, you know, the report we had last week. But in terms of the, you know, we need to make sure that we're providing the right kind of situation. And we may see a migration, so far, we've been seeing sort of migration both ways. Some who's coming back into the in-person model, some going out. And then some of the wild cards are how many students are actually moving away from town and creating slots and how many are moving in. And that's something we're just monitoring closely at this point. At Oak, we have a similar issue, not quite as dramatic, but still higher than we'd like. We're averaging, you know, well within the, underneath the 24 guideline and for the hybrid sections. But for the remote sections, we're averaging almost 27 and ranging from 26 to 29. We'd like those numbers to be lower. Again, we're continuing to monitor that and see if there's something we can do internally to help ameliorate some of the impact of having those larger size, larger class sizes. And so with that, that's the data I wanted to present to you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Any questions or comments? Straightforward? Thank you. Okay, moving on. Next, we're going to have a report. It's an update on the process for the redistricting of the elementary attendance zones. Last September, we voted to establish an ad hoc committee on redistricting. We've recently had, we had a bit of a hiatus due to the pandemic, but we recently had a meeting, and Mr. Collins will provide an update.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ritz. Just going to run through a fairly brief update on where we are with elementary school redistricting. Of course, the Beal project has been a good news story persistently, even through this pandemic period. The construction project is on schedule and set to open for next August, September, as scheduled. So there's no, been no delay there in that schedule. So we need to continue to move ahead with our elementary redistricting project. As you indicated, school committee decided on a process, which was to create a registered, a redistricting committee composite group with representatives from all elementary schools to do some of the detailed, in-depth work to develop options and make a recommendation to the school committee for an ultimate decision. So this is that representative group here. And you can see, of course, yourself and Mr. Wensky are, from the school committee, are on this redistricting committee. Dr. Sawyer, myself, Tiffany Ostrander, the principal at Coolidge, Mr. Maybe at Spring Street, parents from Spring, Patton, Floral, and Coolidge School, and Beal. Nicole Grace, Shannon Creedon, Rajeez Vella Kapudi, Christine Jazinski, and Tarek Andy. So we appreciate the parent input that is on this committee and providing input into the recommendation. I will say that generally, you know, the process was for redistricting was probably started a little bit early, if you will, which is, in retrospect, a good thing. So we had some slack, if you will, in our schedule. So with the pandemic hiatus, you know, we're, we're really not too far behind schedule, if you will. It's, it's going to be compressed. It will feel fast between now and when we're recommending the school committee vote on February 10th. But still, there's ample time to do the work. We did have two meetings. We started back with this committee back in January. We had our first organizational meeting, and then we had a second meeting in March, at which time we introduced the consultant who's working with us, AppGeo. And we ran that process between the January and February timeframe to hire AppGeo. They do lots of work in this field with municipalities and have good experience with redistricting with other Massachusetts communities. And in fact, they provided the basis of this presentation. Let me use their, many of their slides tonight, and that's their logo in the lower left there, AppGeo. And the school committee will get to see their representatives at an upcoming meeting that you'll have as part of this process. So just want to review tonight some of the goals and objectives. Review the redistricting and demographic workflow, the initial and updated timelines, where we are right now. And probably more importantly, for all of you and your calendaring activities, is we've put together a very detailed and complete schedule to include some community forums. So we'll get to that near the end. So the objectives, of course, are to realign our districts. And knowing that the new Beal school has more than twice the capacity of the existing Beal. And so it's a 790-seat school capacity in that all schools will, elementary schools will be formerly K through four schools. And that we will also, as part of this process, be relieving some current space and enrollment pressure at the other elementary schools as well. Of course, what we want to do is not just look at our current enrollment and status, but also through AppGeo, we've hired a professional demographer to help us with where we might see some future growth in our community, to build in growth projections to these elementary zones so that they can persist the test of time. So, you know, this is kind of the basic workflow, which is, you know, part one, gathering lots of data and providing these maps. AppGeo, of course, is a specialist in geographic information systems. So they're, they're great at taking things like your current student enrollment, which we've provided to them, and then mapping that digitally by address in elementary school zone and demographic, with some demographic information, like little pins on a map. And so it's great visualization and will be very helpful for the school committee to see the recommendations in the community at large as well. You know, part of this process, number two, is to what they call creating components of our town. If you look at that, you know, our town is kind of like a square, almost a rectangle, if you will. And taking each section of town and almost like neighborhoods or what would be reasonable areas that we would want to have as a cohort of, if you will, to stick together from a geographic standpoint with some natural boundaries, whether it be, you know, Lakewood-Sigamond or Route 9 or, you know, the western or eastern border of our town. And create these little building blocks that can then become shuffled around as, like puzzle pieces, if you will. And you can mix and match those to various elementary schools and try to build various options. So that's what the component building is, as part of number two. And then AppGeo will develop some basic scenarios for the redistricting committee to evaluate. And, you know, certainly, we want to present our work as part of the process through community forums. So that's kind of the basic workflow, leading up to a decision in February. Next slide, you know, demographics. Again, we're, we're providing lots of information to them, such as, you know, the last five years of permits pulled for single-family homes and what those addresses were. We have provided to them information on the Edgemere Mixed Use Project at the old drive-in. 250 units of apartment housing with various types of apartments, whether they be one or two-bedroom. We've provided information on the, you know, the so-called Hills Farm Project, which is on Route 20 as well, between Stony Hill Drive on either end. Certainly, it's, it's in the permitting pipeline, if you will, but not, not as, nearly as far along as the Edgemere Project. But we've provided that information for the demographer to assist with forecasting, you know, numbers of student yield, if you will, by apartment complexes. So that's part of the demographic work. And we do have scheduled for you a presentation by the demographer as part of an upcoming school committee meeting. Next slide, these are the considerations, the six considerations that the school committee voted upon and endorsed and asked the redistricting committee to weigh options as we go through this process. And, you know, certainly, some of these things are going to probably work in opposite ways, if you will. So that, you know, for example, having, emphasizing a neighborhood school approach in proximity to your school, but then also trying to balance student demographics. And whereas our town, you know, demographics are sometimes geographically based, those two things can kind of work against one another, if you will. So none of these things will be perfectly fulfilled, but these are the important considerations for all of us to look at as part of the process. Next slide is, you know, the initial timeline had us working through, you know, the April and May and May through August timeframe. And we've pushed that out a bit, so we'll just go right to the updated timeline, which is... Right now, we're back at, at work in the November, December timeframe, if you will. The, the redistricting committee did have a meeting in October to refresh ourselves. And we have some more upcoming meetings here in November and December to begin evaluating various options. And again, most importantly, we believe it's important for the school committee to make a decision at your February 10th meeting so that we can effectively communicate to parents where their child would be going to the school for the upcoming school year. And then also, in parallel, for us to work all of our staffing and let our folks know where, where they'll be teaching next year and what the various enrollments will be at, at each school. So that's kind of the big picture timeline. You know, again, this is the kind of current elementary school zones in the northeast. And yellow is Spring Street and green is Patton. Coolidge is the pink or purple on the west side. And blue, the biggest area right now, is Floral Street School. And, you know, we're, we're, we're taking this, again, in, in building various subsets of these zones or components and seeing how they might be mixed or matched for the, what will be the new Beal school and, and all the other elementary schools as well. So lots of work and component building has been happening. And so the next steps are for AppGeo to begin building the scenarios and for the redistricting committee to evaluate those and refine those and potentially narrow those for presentation to the community at large. And this is the detailed schedule tonight. I'm just providing an update on the process. And the stuff that's in kind of the yellow-green, of course, is for school committee. The, the green print is really redistricting committee work. So we've got two meetings upcoming, back-to-back, one next week and then the week following on November 10th and 17th to look at various preliminary options. And then in December, we have scheduled December 1st for our first virtual community forum. So that would be the first time that we would present some preliminary options for the school, for the entire community to take a look at. And then also, just explain some of the basics about the process to the community. Because we don't, you know, expect that everybody's tuned into these meetings or necessarily up to date on the process or the schedule. Although, I will say, there's a lot of information on our website right now on this whole process. Who's on the committee, the guidelines for decision-making and whatnot. And we'll continue to update that as well. And then, once we do get some options to take a look at, we'll be posting those on our website as well for the community to be able to take a look at. So that December 1st community forum will be coming here before you know it. And then the redistricting committee has some more meetings in December. We are holding December 16th for presentation to you by the demographer at your regularly scheduled meeting, just on the 16th. And then in January, we provide an update, and then a second forum on January 12th, community forum on January 12th. And then have the redistricting committee make a final recommendation to you at your Jan, January 20th meeting. We have also scheduled, I believe this is an additional meeting right now, a public hearing on January 27th, specifically on the redistricting topic, so that community members could provide you some input as well around what might be the recommendation, leading up to the next slide, a final vote on February 10th. And then following that, of course, would be lots of communication in various formats to the community to let folks know what those new elementary zones are and student assignments are for the upcoming school year. And then we would put that plan into place for the upcoming school year and the reopening of Beal, Beal School. So that is the status update in terms of where we are, and happy to respond. So that is the status update in terms of where we are, and happy to respond to any questions folks might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments? Lindsay.
Hi, Mark. Thank you. And all the committee members, especially for their work, anytime we can get more parents involved and community members, I think it helps us do our, do our work here. This is so exciting to think about. We're going to have Beal, right? And what that means and the extra piece of this, you know, in addition to more kindergarten for, for all of our youngsters, is, is a really complicated process. So I think you've laid out a very reasonable process, and I hope we can get the community to engage sort of early and frequently, because we know they'll have strong feelings and, and it's important that we, that we hear all of it and do, do our best. But the guiding principles, I think, are our North Star here, and I'm glad we set them early, and I think they were, they were, they were right, right on for us, so I'm glad they're so, so deeply incorporated into the work that, that AppGeo is doing.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I, you know, there was work going on behind the scenes when we met in March. We didn't really know that the wheels were going to fall off and COVID would hit, and we thought this was our biggest thing that we're going to have to deal with in the future. So it's, it's still extremely important. It is going to be one of those really important things that we need to get right as we redistrict. We did it way back with Floral years ago, so this is going to be a big project. I think the timeframe is reasonable, because a lot of work has gone on in the background. It is a very good group. I mean, you get to see some of how these scenarios work. So again, I agree with Ms. Heffernan. This is where we do want community engagement. We want people to, to give us their opinions, what they're, they're thinking, but we also need to make sure that we have information pushed so that people understand this is kind of a busy time of year, heading into holidays and all that, that people are cognizant of the fact that this is a really big project that we're doing. So thank you, Mr. Collins. I know you've been doing a lot on this, all the way along through this. Anything further? Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
I also want to thank Mr. Collins for shepherding this along, and, you know, it's a really good committee. We're looking forward to some intensive work coming up in the coming weeks and months, and it will be a very interesting process, and I'm sure we'll, the committee will be able to make a thoughtful recommendation to the full school committee for what will be a very important decision.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Collins will stay with us, and he will give us a update or presentation on the fiscal year 2022 budget calendar.
Okay, so you have the calendar in your school committee packet. It's, I'll say, a fairly traditional schedule. It's hard to believe, if you will, that we're talking now about developing a succeeding year, next fiscal year budget, given just the pandemic and still talking about, like, reopening plans for this school year. But we do need to do this work and begin now. We have already began this work in earnest internally in the business office. This, the purpose of this calendar is to just ensure that, you know, the school committee is, you know, on board with having this time and sequence play out for development of your budget and, which will be your recommendation to the annual town meeting in May. You know, we do know that, we believe that the annual town meeting next May, where annual appropriations are made, will still be as scheduled next, next May seventeenth and nineteenth. And so it's, it's kind of a work-backwards process from there. And I will tell you that the town manager has indicated that he's likely, you know, to have his budget process be starting a little bit later than he would normally do, probably by three or four weeks later, but it's still ending at the same time. And so all that really means is it's, it's a bit more compressed near the end. So, you know, included in here is, is a series of, of meetings. I won't read through all of these things for you, but, you know, we, we have deep dives basically on various aspects of the budget occurring in February after the initial presentation, which we've right now scheduled for February. I think the thing you'll notice on this calendar as well is that in prior years, we were more specific about targeting specific school committee meeting dates for the actual presentation of the initial, initial budget and when these presentations would be occurring and meeting with finance committee and things like that. We had very specific dates. We don't have all those right now, because, you know, things aren't quite, quite lined up yet with the municipal side right now. But anyway, the sequence is the same, the endpoint is the same, and again, I think ours will feel likely as well, a bit more compressed in, you know, between February and basically mid to late April. And part of that, I think, is, you know, by design, because the information flow about this school year is still not finalized. We still don't have a state budget for Massachusetts, for fiscal twenty-one, for the current fiscal year. What we do believe is, is that the governor is still scheduled to present his initial budget for fiscal twenty-two, which he's required to do by late January, that he'll still do that. That's kind of yet to be seen. So, you know, we are asking for the school committee to vote this calendar in primarily on the basis of sequence, and certainly we could, you know, adjust accordingly as the situation demands, but this is what we have for you tonight, and again, happy to answer any questions folks might have on this process.
Any questions or comments on the proposed calendar? No? Good, okay. Dr. Sawyer, any questions, comments?
No, I, again, appreciate the work that Mr. Collins is doing and the continued collaboration with Mr. Mizikar and his office, and it lays out a calendar that should work for us, and there'll be a lot of hard work ahead.
Yep.
I have one question.
Sure.
It looks like there is, I don't know when the redistricting committee meets, but you just, we have two calendars back-to-back, and both of them have a January thirteenth date, the school committee budget workshop, too, and there's a redistricting committee, but I don't know if that meets during the day. So for those of you who be at balls, that's not a problem?
And I know Dale had mentioned a potential conflict with another meeting for the library.
Library's having their, the Library Foundation is having its first event that evening for the proposed in January.
And this is a draft, so we can adjust this as we move forward, but I think, right now, we're just voting on the draft to get these dates kind of penciled in. Anything else? Nope. We have a motion that the committee vote to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget calendar as presented.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have our minutes from our meeting on October twenty-second, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? Not seeing any. They can be marked as accepted, as distributed. And we have nothing further this evening. Dr. Sawyer, anything further?
I do not.
Great. We have a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.